For tonight, Tuesday, February 10th. And we are ready to begin. I should announce that Selectman DeWitt will be participating with us remotely due to geographic unavailability. She's not on the phone just yet, but she will be shortly. So pursuant to this board's authority under 940 CMR 2910 subsection 8, Selectman DeWitt will be participating remotely via telephone due to location. There is a quorum present, and all votes will be taken by recorded roll call vote. We are going to, unless somebody has a announcement, I think we can dispense with it.
Well, I'll just mention that Selectman Franco and I were at the Library Midwinter Mingle.
Correct.
And it was, even though we had snow earlier in the day, it was a pretty well-attended event, and it was a lot of fun, and I hope they met their fundraising goal.
And we both actually were at an event before the Library Gala, a Climate Week event, "Green Up Your House With The Click Of A Mouse." So it was a twofer for us on Sunday night.
All right.
Yeah, and the point of that event was spreading the word that you can subscribe to green energy, so you can make sure that the electricity that's being supplied to your house is, comes from renewable sources.
Yeah, there's a mothers group, I think, that you need to...
Right.
Sponsored by Mothers Out Front and Climate Action Brookline.
So where do people find the info on that?
It's an excellent question. I think it's probably prominently located on the Climate Action webpage, and I think the company that, Mothers Out Front and the Climate Action Committee have partnered with is Mass Energy. So I'm sure if you go to that webpage and search Brookline, you will come to the...
Yeah, MothersOutFront.org. And then they partner with Mass Energy.
Yeah, I heard that some of that is very renewable, and it's methane from cows.
Yeah, there are two options. There's 100 percent wind and then a, an option that does offer the ability to power your house with cow manure, and low-impact hydro energy as well, I believe.
I'm sorry I missed those. I was stuck, out of town and kind of got stuck.
Okay, anything else?
I just want to say, I got back into town at, just before midnight last night, and when I got a cab, the roads were pretty tough in Boston, and the minute we crossed the line into Brookline, I see the Commissioner back there, the roads were better. And this afternoon, I took another run up Beacon Street, and the roads were fabulous. So kudos to your guys. I know they must be exhausted and people working around the clock again, but did a very good job, and we appreciate the sustained effort over the last three weeks.
And we'll be hearing from Commissioner Pappas Sturgeon in just a minute. We'll let you give us a briefing on activities. Thank you. All right, if there's no more Selectman announcements or updates, and I know there's no public comment, I'd like to proceed to the miscellaneous calendar. There's three different sets of minutes. We're going to take them all together. It's the minutes of the February 3, 2015 Selectman meeting, the minutes of the override public hearing meeting for January 20th and 22nd. And I have some comments on the Selectman meetings.
As do I.
And, but not on the other two.
As do I.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes of the Board of Select meeting for February 3, 2015, the override public hearing on January 20th, and the override public hearing on January 22nd, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now miscellaneous item C is the question of approving the emergency acquisition of a sidewalk snow tractor. That's Selectman DeWitt joining us telephonically.
Hello, this is Selectman DeWitt.
Okay, Betsy, you're on, you're all set.
Okay.
Can you, can you hear us okay, Betsy?
I'm, I'm hearing you on my computer. I hope that'll work.
Okay, will you just call out from time to time, and so that we know that you're there, and if you can't, if you can't hear us, let us know too, please. Commissioner Pappas Sturgeon, if you can, before we get to the tractor, why don't you brief us on operations dealing with this long snow event that we've all lived through?
Well, it seems to be endless for the past several weeks since January 26, which was the beginning of the first on the blizzard, at which point we had five inches of snow total for the season. We are now up to 73 inches of snow total, and I mentioned to you before that we generally budget for 43 inches in a complete season, so we've far exceeded that in just a few short weeks. And of course, February is far from over. Seems like we're still in this pattern for another week or two, so, so I always say I'm hoping, I'm hoping for the best, but I'm not naive enough to think that I shouldn't prepare for the worst. So, so this particular storm, which was in its own right a tough one for us, was a 33-hour total duration. The blizzard that we fought several weeks ago was a 37-hour storm. This one was 33 hours, so not that far off. We received 21 inches of snow in a two-day period. I had 107 total pieces of equipment, snow fighting equipment on the road, which included 19 pieces of private contractor equipment, the rest being our own. We did declare a snow emergency on the, on February 9 at 6:00 a.m., and it was scheduled to last until noon time on, on February 10, which was today, and it did end today at noon time. As we normally do, we activated a parking ban on a snow emergency. Our emergency operations center was activated, and it was staffed by both the police department and the DPW. We did receive, or put out 44 calls to tow vehicles of those, though we only towed 18, which is good. We're not in this to tow cars. We, we're in this to plow streets, so, you know, if we don't tow any cars, it's fine with me. That means that there are none on the road. School was canceled, of course, yesterday and today, and I will tell you that it will be ready to open by 6:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. We do have crews coming back in at 10 o'clock tonight, and they will, they will finish up the cleanup at the schools. Some of the challenges for this particular storm, as you all can see, the pavement widths are getting very narrow, the snow banks are getting very large. These are probably the largest snow banks I've seen since 1978, and I was here, by the way, for the blizzard of '78. The availability of space at our snow dump, while we still have room left, it's, it's getting less and less, and in order to, you know, maintain capacity there, we're beginning to pile it higher and higher, so I have equipment working up there now, trying to move the snow up to a higher level to make room for more. I took the town administrator up there yesterday, and I think he thought he was looking at the Rocky Mountains when he was looking at this mountains, mountain of snow. But we're okay there for a while. The duration of this storm was the one that posed the biggest problems for us. You know, with back-to-back storms like these, you know, generally when you get a large storm, you like to see at least a week's worth of rest for the, for the manpower. When they're hitting us like this, it's, there's not a lot of time to, for the guys to get rest when you're trying to use them for snow removal and roadway widening, and then clearing schools, and doing all the other things that we have to do after it stops snowing. You know, shoveling and clearing the paths that are all over town, clearing the hydrants, opening up the catch basins. It just seems to be endless, so there's no rest. And I have been getting concerned about the, the capacity of my folks that just continue. So we've begun a program where we're now rotating manpower, and we're standing down folks so that they can go home and get some rest before, you know, I lose that, that ability. We do continue to enforce the sidewalk snow removal bylaws, and I don't know, you know, we are, we do get a lot of complaints and requests on Brookline, and those seem to grow every single day. We have now begun posting the deadlines on the town website, right on the front page, so that folks know what the time deadline is for the clearing of commercial and multifamily sidewalks, and also what the deadline is for residential properties. We've begun posting those on the front page of the website. Today's, or this most recent storm, the deadline for commercial clearing was 10:00 a.m. this morning, and for residential properties, it's noon time tomorrow. So beyond noon time tomorrow, we will begin enforcing the bylaw for residential properties. So the particular cost of this storm estimated right now, of course, is about $277,000. That doesn't include straight time costs. Those are overtime costs for DPW employees, contractor costs, and of course, road salt. One of the other problems we're having, we're all having, all the cities and towns are having right now, is that, that most of the private trucking is tied up hauling snow. They get, they get, they make more money hauling snow than they do hauling salt for the salt companies. So the trucks have been pretty much unavailable for, from all the big salt companies to haul road salt out to municipalities, so, you know, while there's plenty of salt over in Chelsea, there's not a lot of trucks to haul it. So we've had to improvise a little bit. Our salt supplies were getting a little bit low before this storm, so we had to utilize our own equipment for transporting salt over from Chelsea to our facility on Hammond Street. And we felt, you know, while we pay a premium to do that, because a lot of times we're using contractor trailer dumps to do it, it was the only way that we can ensure that we had enough product on hand to fight this particular storm. So the supplies are now being delivered through normal channels. The salt companies are sending their trucks in now, so we're in fairly good shape with road salt.
Great. Well, I want to express my gratitude to you and your staff, and the men and women who were out there on those plows, working tremendously long shifts in this case, I'm sure. I'm sure we were pushing 16 hours and more for shifts. Given that there's more snow on the ground than has ever been on the ground in the Boston area, that's been confirmed on the weather reports and confirmed by my own observation for my 55 years, I think we've done a remarkably good job. I know it's not perfect yet. I know there's still work to be done on side streets and, and clearing parking areas and clearing out big mounds, but the roads are passable, and I was at work today, and I know a lot of other people who were too. So thank you to the entire DPW staff, as well as the other members of the Control Command Center team, police and fire and parks and everybody who contributes. Anything? Great. Why don't you tell us about the need for an emergency acquisition of a snow tractor?
Well, our fleet is starting to show the signs of overuse, I guess you would say. We, our sidewalk snow fleet consists mostly of tractors, and we have three different types of tractors that we use for clearing sidewalks. We have two 1994 vintage Bombardiers that are equipped with plow blades that are problematic. In fact, neither one of them is currently commissioned right now. We have a 2008 Bombardier that's equipped with a snow thrower and a sander in the back, and that was the unit that we bought after that special authorization from town meeting back in '08. And we have a 2014 Bombardier equipped with a snow thrower and a sander that, that you graciously authorized us to purchase last year during the snow season. And those, those two units with the snow throwers have proven to be invaluable fighting these types of storms that we, we've been dealing with. The banks are just so large, it's almost impossible to clear a sidewalk with a snowplow. And if we use a V blade on the snowplow, which, which I don't like to use particularly in the commercial areas, because half of the snow is pushed back towards the doorways, and, you know, to try to use a straight blade pushing towards the snowbank, it's just, it's almost impossible to do it, given the size of the bank. So the only way to do it is to use a snow thrower, where we're able to throw the snow from the sidewalk up on top of the bank. We do have two 1999 model older tractors that are equipped with, with older type snow throwers, and one of those units is out of commission. We have a 2010 older tractor, which we do use every day with a snow thrower. And I have two 2004 trackless units, which are the multi-use municipal tractors that we use for both snow removal, street sweeping, and leaf mulching and blowing in the, in the fall. Out of those nine tractors, I only have six that I can use at this time, and out of those six, only five of them are actually being able to be used with this particular type of situation we're in with the large snowbanks, because the other tractors are equipped with a straight blade, and it's pretty much useless. So I'm here begging, begging you really, to allow us to purchase another Bombardier snow, snow thrower tractor with a sander body on the back. They're able to be purchased on an emergency basis through state contract. There is several available that we can take delivery on very quickly. The price in your memo is listed as $140,000, but I should caution you that the, the actual price is $150,000, and you can verify that if you, if you look at the memo that I sent regarding the, the capital equipment for FY16, you will see that the prices for the tractors are at $150,000. So I would ask you if you would authorize this, to authorize it for $150,000. Get this tractor up and running, I think that we can, we have a fairly decent fleet moving forward. We do have plans in future budgets to begin replacing some of this aging snow equipment, hopefully, given, given the different options, and my memo addresses some of those different options going forward. So I would ask your consideration to purchase this tractor now, so we can have it available going forward immediately.
Commissioner, we've also, we've been talking last week relative to our override discussion and Selectman Daley's suggestion that we include some money for some snowplow, some sidewalk snow removal equipment. We've been talking about some other equipment for, for that proposal.
Yes.
This is not that other equipment, if I understood correctly.
No, it's not that equipment. This is in addition to that equipment.
And would it, is there, would it make more sense to, instead of getting this piece of equipment for the $150,000, to get one of those sidewalk removal, snow-throwing machines that you've said would, would enable us to really expedite and make efficient the snow removal process?
Two completely different types of equipment for two completely different uses. The sidewalk tractors are absolutely essential for clearing the sidewalks, that, you know, between the buildings and the snowbanks. The other piece of equipment that I, that I suggested that we purchase at some point, perhaps through the override, is a piece, is a very large snow thrower unit. It's nine feet wide, five feet high, that's mounted on the front of a very large loader, a rubber tire loader, and that piece of equipment would be used for running the gutter line in the street to actually remove the snowbanks up to the curb line and throw them directly into a truck.
I see. So that, so that doesn't drive down the sidewalk?
Oh, no, no.
No, but I think, I thought, I thought I understood that it could also, the big snowbanks that are on the edge of the sidewalk, that it could also do those.
It can do many things that are, that are large, but it cannot clear a sidewalk.
Right.
Okay. And my original proposal, it included two of those units and one new sidewalk tractor. We have since refined that, because those units are much more expensive than we thought. But I had requested that we purchase one new sidewalk tractor and one of those units going forward, and this, this unit, if you authorized it tonight, would, would give us a real edge on the second tractor, so that our fleet was bolstered.
And how would we fund this, this tractor? Not, not, not talking about the...
This tractor tonight?
Yeah.
This would be funded out of the snow and ice control budget, and of course, you recall that we are now under Chapter 44, so that it would just become part of that deficit.
It'd be part of our deficit spending.
Yes. Just the same exact procedure that you followed last year, when you authorized the purchase of a tractor last year.
Okay. Can we hear from the Mr. Klattner, Mr. Cronin, or, or anyone who can tell us about our ability to, to absorb this, this added expense in, in the deficit spending?
Well, we, we have always, at least to my knowledge, never had to go into the next fiscal year, so we have a significant reserve fund, which, you know, clearly will be, I think, used totally for snow and ice this year. And then at the end of the year, we do a reconciliation of Department of Public Works budgets, all, all of the programs, and try to find funding that has not been expended so that we can make up this difference. And finally, we have been advised that we're likely to receive a federal emergency declaration from FEMA, and we'll get some reimbursement. Now, you know, I don't know how much more snow we're going to get, so I'm not going to tell you that it's going to be fine, but at this point, I think we'll be able to cover the cost without having to put it into the fiscal '16 budget, but I'm certainly willing to have a different opinion or from Sean or Andy about that.
No, and all the years that I've been here, you know, we have, you haven't wrote Chapter 44 many, many times. In fact, it's become more of the norm than, than not. And when we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, we examine the DPW budget for surpluses, and in most years, we cover a good deal of this deficit directly from surpluses within the DPW budget. The balance, of course, comes from the reserve fund, and depending on the year, you know, it could be more, it could be less. This year, you know, the deficit is not insignificant, but I'm confident that, well, again, just as Mel said, you know, we don't have a crystal ball to see through the end of the, of the winter season, but I'm confident that, that between the surpluses and the DPW budget and the reserve fund, that we can cover this.
Thank you. Members have questions? Selectman Daley?
Well, I want to take another stab. I don't, I'm not sure I've convinced anybody, but I want to take one more stab at this in terms of an ongoing program. So Andy, if I've, if I've got it straight, you're asking for this emergency sidewalk Bombardier right now. You and I had talked about doing initially, if you got some DPW equipment money out of the override, and your initial purchases would be another Bombardier and these two snow throwers.
Yes.
And that's, that still would be your plan? You think you need two Bombardiers, not just one?
I, I could, I need the two Bombardiers, so, so this, this is definitely separate from the information that I provided to you.
Uh-huh.
We still need, we would still look to buy another Bombardier tractor, from whatever source that may be, but instead of buying two of those loader-mounted units, which we thought at the time were $25,000, and we have now come to find out that they're $126,000, rather than buy two of those, I retailed it to buy one of those, and that is all the information I gave you in the memo.
Okay, I see.
So, so out of, out of that, we would buy the snow thrower for $126,000, we would buy another Bombardier for $150,000. That comes to $276,000, which we would lease over three years, giving you an annual cost of $92,000. In addition to that, we would purchase a replacement snow thrower attachment for one of our older tractors for $14,500, bringing the combined total for both the lease and the purchase to $106,500. That's the proposal that would still go forward.
Okay. But, but I just want to get to, so this would be an ongoing, if, if we were to put something in the override, it wouldn't just be for the three years you're leasing this particular equipment, it would be a kind of ongoing portion of the override? And I see what you're, you've given us a memo in which you're saying that there's a 15-year-old vehicle that you use for the, picking up the park's litter, that you could defer. It's 15 years old, but I, you think you can get a couple more years out of it.
Andy, because, because with the purchase of the big bellies on the public ways, we've now freed up an extra litter truck that's a newer model in highway that we can use to augment the park program.
Okay.
That's why.
And you have another piece of equipment that's for sidewalk repairs, not, not snow removal, but general repairs, that you're saying could be deferred. And another, another pickup truck was a plow that's also 15 years old that you could defer. What I'm trying to get at is, give us an expla, it's, you and I had a discussion on the phone that I thought was very enlightening, about how, as we ask you to keep doing as much or more with, with fewer people, that having really good equipment can kind of fill the gap and allow your, your, you know, smaller staff than what you used to have to do a great job with, with, so fewer people can do the work if they have good equipment. And as we seem to be, I, it was interesting to me today, I saw on the news, the, we're number nine for, since they've been counting snow totals in terms of highest amount of snow totals, and we still have more of the season to go, so we may work our way up. But the interesting thing to me was that a number of the other years were years that I've lived in Brookline that are within my recent memory, kind of in the last 20-some years. And so this is not really, having it so close together is certainly an anomaly this year, but having big snow years is becoming not totally unexpected, I think.
We're always going to have the, have to have the capacity to fight snowstorms. Some years, we're going to get, we're going to sneak away, and some years, we're going to get walled. This year, we're getting walled. You know, the years that we get walled, it takes a toll on the equipment. But even the years that we don't, it still takes a toll on the equipment, because even though you get, you know, an inch of snow that turns to ice, I still have to send the sanders out and sand those roads. You know, snow equipment encompasses a lot more than just sidewalk tractors and snow throwers, you know, which are basically sidewalk clearing and snow removal equipment. We have, we have so, snow fighters that need to be replaced from time to time. We have sanders and salders, you know, that are, that are on specialty bodies that have to be replaced. We have front-end loaders that need to be replaced, and, you know, we only have so much capacity within our capital equipment budget to do that, to do all that replacement along with all the other stuff that we have to replace. So there's always going to have to be a capacity there for snow fighter equipment, so it's just how you want to order it.
Well, I will say that I think town meeting showed great enthusiasm about better snow removal, and that this would not be a bad thing to add to the override, and I think it's necessary, and that, you know, the, the more equipment Andy has on some of this stuff, the more the schools can stay open when they get, you know, can get out there and very efficiently get those sidewalks going in front of the schools and going to the schools done. So I would once again suggest that we should add something to the override.
We're actually not talking about the override now, but Selectman Daley, I mean, I gotta, I think, have the need to, to point this out again. What Commissioner Pappas Sturgeon has told us is that he can figure out a way to, to adapt his, his capital program so that we get these pieces of sidewalk clearing equipment now, not dependent on, on a, on an override, but replace some other things that can, that can be moved, you know, deeper in the calendar to get this, this equipment now. I agree with you. Town meeting has been very strong in its, in its direction that we do more about sidewalk snow removal. This is what allows us to do that and doesn't make it dependent on an override to do it. So I, I thank you, Commissioner Sturgeon, for, Pappas Sturgeon, for being adaptable on this. Let's refocus now on this emergency.
Can I ask a question about the emergency?
Yes, yeah, I'd like to refocus on the emergency.
So you said we can get this quickly. Are you going, are you going to get this in time to help with this current wave of snow? How fast is fast? in time to help with this current wave of snow? How fast is fast?
If you authorize it tonight, I'll have it tomorrow.
Seriously?
Yes.
Cool.
Selectman Franco, Selectman DeWitt, any questions, comments? Selectman DeWitt, are you with us?
I am following along. And what I can say, from where I have been, which is a place without snow at the moment, I have watched the weather channel, which has focused very much on Boston. And I have great empathy and understanding for the need to be properly equipped to take care of the snow. So, I am very supportive of the commissioner's request for this equipment at this time.
Selectman Franco?
It's my recollection that there's a requirement that next year's budget, budget as much as we spent this year for snow removal. And-
As much as we budget this year?
Is it budget or is it spent?
Yeah, no.
No, budget.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, I move that we approve the emergency acquisition of a sidewalk snow tractor in the amount of $140,000. So, that should be $150,000, right?
One fifty.
In the amount of $150,000. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have two temporary alcoholic beverage licenses. The first is a wine and beer temporary license for La's Anderson Auto Museum, Auto Museum in connection with an event to be held at 15 Newton Street for the Dove fundraiser on February 26, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Note that they have a snow date, fittingly, for March 5, 2015. And that the second proposal is, proposed temporary alcoholic beverage license is also wine and malt only, for a license to be held for an event at the Vine Ripe Grill in connection with a golf dinner to be held on February 12, 2015, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at 1281 West Roxbury Parkway. That's the Golf Clubhouse. All in favor of those two temporary alcoholic beverage licenses, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman, before you move to the calendar, could I just mention something that I forgot to do under the board's announcements? We've been trying to schedule the Brookline Community Foundation to talk about their upcoming, well, their report and their upcoming forum. And we have not been able to do that. So, I promised the foundation that I would make this announcement this evening, because we will not be able to meet with them prior to this event. But there is a Understanding Brookline, a report on poverty highlighting Barry Bluestone as the speaker, and also who is a professor of political economy at the Kitty and Michael Tocca Center at Northeastern University. And this event will be on Thursday, February 26, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Brookline Teen Center. Again, it's Understanding Brookline, a Report on Poverty, which is a free event. And you could check the Brookline Community Foundation's website for that. I'm sorry for forgetting to do that earlier.
And I'll just, I'll just mention, I heard Professor Bluestone speak at the MMA, and he's quite an excellent speaker.
Great.
So, it should be a good program.
And we will be hearing from the Brookline Community Foundation on their report about poverty in Brookline very shortly, but not tonight. Moving on to our regular calendar, the first item is number six on your agenda. It's the question of approving and transmitting to the advisory committee the request of assessor Gary McCabe for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $50,000, and that's for outside council services related to property tax appeals on several utility accounts. Mr. McCabe, tell us about this, please.
Thank you, Chairman Goldstein. Gary McCabe here, representing the Board of Assessors and speaking on behalf also of Town Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present this request. We seek your approval and recommendation that we could proceed to advisory who've scheduled to hear me tonight. So, thank you both, and thank you in advance. So, this request is a reserve fund transfer request, funds to be expended this fiscal year, '15, so that we can secure outside counsel to work with us on property tax appeals that have been filed at the appellate tax board by two Brookline taxpayers. They're separate appeals. They run over the same fiscal years, fiscal year '12, '13, and '14. They're both generally considered utility companies. One is RC&amp;Bico Comm LLC. They have personal property, it's a personal property account here in Brookline. It's, RC&amp;Bico Comm is a bundled carrier that provide telephone, cable, television, and internet access. They've appealed their assessment statewide, actually, against a value that was assigned by the commissioner of revenue. This is a category of property that, because it's in multiple communities, the statute has the commissioner of revenue assign a value that we are certified to assess and then send out a bill. And then, we're left with defending the assessment because we sent out the bill. So, it's a little, it's a little unusual in the cases such as this with a certified value of effectively a telephone company. The assessors can appeal the commissioner's value, which we've chosen to do. So, it's actually called an affirmative appeal against an assessment that we did not generate, that we were given. At the same time, the company is filing against that assessment as well. The company's claiming the assessment's too high, we're claiming it's too low. So, it's kind of an unusual situation. It does allow us to have time to argue our case at the hearing, and that's what we're seeking to do. The appeal hearing's actually already started. We were able to cover the cost of pre-trial expenses, but now we're in actual litigation expenses. We need assistance from Town Council, and in this case, the reserve fund, to pay for that. The tax dollars at issue are almost $700,000 over the three years. We've set those funds aside in the overlay reserve account. So, to any degree that we're successful in reducing this liability, then those funds would then become available as surplus in the overlay account. The other case, and we're seeking, for the RCN, we're seeking outside counsel support, specialized counsel, that our Town Council has approved. The other case is N-Star Electric Company. A little bit different situation, same years, also personal property, poles and wires, conduits, you know, underground pipes, that sort of thing. Over three years, total taxes, total taxes, $4.2 million. Potential liability, $1.4 million, oh, sorry, $1.2 million. This is an appeal against the Board of Assessors, who did indeed sign this value. This is not a commissioner of revenue value. We've sought outside counsel expertise on this as well, and a engineer to assist us with the valuation, defense of value on this. We've joined, I should have mentioned this at the top, we've joined with other communities in this case. City of Austin, City of Newton, Town of Brookline, and the City of Springfield have joined in to hire the same attorney, same expert. We're sharing the cost on a, like in a portioned or percentage basis, based on a value, assessed value. All right. These cases are ongoing now, and will conclude this fiscal year. So, I ask for your support.
Answer my questions. Any questions from members of the board? Well, it sounds like a good investment. Sounds like we're not, we're sending good money after good money instead of after bad money, so.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Our effort is to maintain our tax base. With any large appeal, almost, I could argue, with any appeal, there's usually a story behind that appeal. But certainly, a story's here I'll be willing to share, or perhaps with advisory. But, you know, RCN seeking a very large refund based on a 2010 acquisition that we've looked very closely at, and we just don't believe they've allocated the value to the assets in the Boston market, particularly in Brookline, in a manner that reflects the market value of those assets. So, we disagree. This is value, this is on valuation, both of these cases.
Good. Anything further from board members? Selectman DeWitt?
It sounds like a perfectly reasonable request from our assessor, and I know this whole matter has been ongoing for quite a number of years.
Good. All right. One move that we approve and transmit to the advisory committee, the request of Chief Assessor Gary McCabe for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $50,000 for outside council services related to property tax appeals on several utility accounts. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Great.
Thank you.
Is, thank you, Gary. Is Melissa Trevette here? Melissa? I think not. Well, we next, we had a, I'm sorry?
She's in the lobby.
Oh, in the lobby? Would you, thanks. Would you ask her to step in? Good evening. So, next we have an interview for, for a appointment to the Cable Television Advisory Committee, and our candidate is Melissa Trevette. And welcome, Melissa. Tell us about yourself and why you're seeking appointment.
In my career, I worked as an administrative librarian. And I came to Massachusetts about four years ago to become Executive Director of the Boston Library Consortium. About two years ago, well, nearly two years ago, I retired from that position. So, I've been living in Brookline about four years, but I've been renting. And so, recently, we decided that we wanted to put down roots in Brookline. And I began attending meetings of BICAN. And I just found it really helpful in thinking about what we could do to make sure that we were living in a place that would allow us to age in place. And so, I was very impressed with what's going on in Brookline in terms of assisting people in aging in place. So, then Frank Caro sent out an email asking if anyone was interested in participating in the renewal of the decisions about the Comcast license. And I thought that that would be one way that I could participate, working with seniors, participate in making it possible for people to age in place. And I have some experience with licensing, although it's quite different. I worked on licensing electronic resources. But as I looked over today, I took a quick look at the Massachusetts, I guess, no, it was actually the Brookline license with Comcast, the one that's come up for renewal. And I was just reminded of the kinds of clauses that exist. And so, that was interesting to me. So, I have some familiarity with the licensing process. And the other thing that I have done in my career is to bring stakeholder groups together to make sure that people who are interested in this kind of activity understand what it can do for them, get a sense of what their needs are, and then try to balance that. So, that is a little bit about my background, why I'm interested in the committee, and I'd be glad to answer more questions.
Good. Board members have questions? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, well, I'm intrigued by your, saying your interest was in, on your sheet, access to information, resources, and services, and, and needs of senior population to enable the aging in place, as you mentioned. So, I wonder if you've had a chance to look at some of the local shows on the cable access television channel, and whether you think that there could be more for seniors or-
You know, I have to say, it's been a while since I, early on, I did see some of the shows. And recently, I looked, and I had trouble finding the station. And I didn't go further than that. And so, I think that's a very good question, and I would want to look at that as part of serving on this committee. But I don't have an opinion at this point. The only thing I can say is, I went to a meeting on livable cities. I think you're on that committee.
I'm on the Brookline as an age-friendly city.
Right, that's, that's the one I meant. And the interesting thing there, I thought, was that it's clear that it's not easy for people to get started participating by having meetings televised. So, that, it seemed to me there might be some opportunities for training, just to think about what we can do to lower that bar, to make it really easy for people to put a program that they're interested in on the interactive television station.
Good. Questions? Selectman Wyszynski?
I'm going to be chairing this committee. So, I'm glad that you're interested, and you seem extremely well-qualified. You know, this committee's going to be holding some public hearings, and then we're going to have outside counsel helping us, guide us through this process, which is very technical. And then, in another year or two, the RCN license is coming up. So, then this committee will have a role in that, too. So, think you can help us for a couple of years?
Actually, that was one of my questions. So, an appointment to the committee would be not only for the Comcast license, but also for the RCN renewal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, and for general, dealing with the, our cable-
Yeah, I don't-
I think the goal was to, was to make it an ongoing committee with a three-year term.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and BIG, which is formerly called the B, Brookline Access Television, that's a different body that has its own board. Now, the source of funds-
Yeah, it's a different-
This will provide one of the sources of funds for BIG. So, you'll have a hand in helping negotiate that source of funds. So, that should be interesting.
I would be willing and able to accept a three-year appointment. So, that would be fine. One of the questions I have is that I do travel, though, at times. So, what is, in a sense, your expectation on the number of meetings there would be per month? What about an absence or absences? Can you speak to that?
Yeah. You know, everyone is busy, and, you know, absences happen. You know, these are volunteer positions, and life intervenes. I think in terms of the committee workload and expectations, we're trying to look at a public hearing in the April timeframe, and then there'll be another public hearing in the September, October timeframe, and there might be a meeting or two in between. So, it's not going to be, you know, weekly meetings, you know, anything like that.
That would be all right, actually. That's one of the nice things about retirement. But I was curious about when most of the work would go on. It looked like to me, too, that the spring would be primarily this ascertainment-
Right.
-period, and that it has to be done prior to next, the end of next April. So-
Right.
Have to do it by then.
Selectman Franco?
I noticed that you are a former resident of the City of Chicago, meaning that you've got some experience, recent experience with cable television and internet providers in another region of the country. And I'm wondering if you could sort of comment on the quality of the services we have here as compared to experiences you've had in other municipalities?
In terms of my residential experience?
Yeah, I mean, quality of service, cost of service, availability of programming, just sort of, how are we doing here in Brookline?
I had RCN, the first place I lived in. And then, since then, we live in the St. Mary's area, and our only option is Comcast. And I know, I expect, like everyone else, I debate, is this a Comcast problem? Is this another kind of problem? So, the thing that I really notice is, there is an intermittent aspect to my signal reception. You know, I cannot depend on 24-by-7 reception. Now, I understand that the- Now, I understand that the wires are above ground for cable are above ground in Brookline, so perhaps this has an effect. I also know, I live in an old building, so I think that could have an effect. My husband and I use different computers with different operating systems. I think that could have an effect. So I think, I thought that was one of the challenges of serving on a committee like this, is to really determine the quality. In terms of, it's hard for me to compare with Chicago, because I don't remember having the extent to which I think there's... You know, suddenly my connection drops, 30 seconds later, it's back up. You know, we'll wait 20 minutes, it'll drop for 30 seconds. I experienced that a lot. I do not recall that from Chicago. But...
I will say that I have Comcast as well, and I have a great signal. So I think it might be your building or your borough town or something like that.
I think it could be, too. And, you know, frankly, we only had cable for a very brief period in Chicago, and we actually, in our residence, had satellite. And that had its problems, too. So, you know, I can't give a good comparison, because I think there are really many things, many factors that can impact it. And as I said, I think that's one of the things that makes it really interesting, because you want to be fair when you work on something like this.
I had a weak signal for a while. I went to Comcast, complained about it. They installed some kind of an amplifier device? You might ask them about that.
I will, although I think we may have that.
Good. Any other questions? Selectman DeWitt?
No, just the assistant and his candidates, highly qualified.
Thank you. All right. We're not going to make our appointment tonight, but we really thank you for your interest, and we'll let you know as soon as we do make our appointment.
That will be fine. Do you have any idea when that will be, just from my information?
I don't, but it needs to be soon. You're the first applicant that we've had the opportunity to interview, so I'm guessing it will be a few weeks, probably.
That will be fine. Let me ask you one other thing, then. Does the committee have a budget?
Well, a budget to hire outside counsel, so that's our budget.
All right. And the other thing I wasn't clear on after reading through the information, it sounds to me as if during the renewal process, that we're not to consider programming. Actually, I think I read two different things. It seemed to me in the draft charge, it indicated there would be an interest in programming, and it seemed to me that could apply to what seniors want and need. But then when I read the body, I think this was in the memo, it seemed to say the focus would be on billing, signal strength, and so forth.
My sense is that their programming, from a network point of view, is prohibited. Regulation of programming. I think probably the programming that was referred to in the charge may have been the quality and extent of programming for the local access system, which this license provides funding for. That's my guess.
Yeah, just realized, too, that we're working within the box of a very tight regulatory scheme that limits, in many significant ways, what we can... The arguments we can use in dealing with Comcast and RCN. But whatever arguments we can use, we'll use them to their fullest.
That will be good. All right. Well, thank you very much for considering me.
Thank you. And we're on to the main event of the evening, which is agenda item number eight, which is a final review of issues and potentially the vote on a specific override debt exclusion ballot question. And I'll jump in and note that by now you've all seen and reviewed the proposed motions that have been offered by Selectman Washinsky and myself. Those two options, in the bottom line, don't differ by a very large amount. My proposal is for an override amount of $7,953,000. Selectman Washinsky proposes an override of $7,665,000. The difference is really one of methodology and how we get there, more than anything else, more than any fundamental difference in where we think this override should be. It's probably no secret to you at this point, but my methodology has to do with having the school administration show us what they need the money for, what the... Who they would hire, what programs they seek to fund with an override. You've all seen Peter Rose's proposal from a few weeks ago, a multicolored proposal that showed you how that broke down under various scenarios. My approach was to take the full ask and to figure out where we could make cuts from that. And I had made several cuts from the full ask previously, based on challenges to assumptions about collective bargaining and funding of administrative staff. And over the last weeks, I became aware that there was a somewhat more optimistic estimate of new revenue growth to the tune of about half a million dollars. And I also saw that an advantage to trying to bring that number down to where the, what's called the Group Two of our override study committee, had proposed. And I sensed that that was something that not just the override study committee would want to see, but even members of the school committee might be comfortable with as well. So with that in mind, I looked to the next place where I thought a cut could be made, and that's with the Second Grade Para-Professional Program, which is something of an enhancement that Commissioner... I'm sorry, that Superintendent Lupini has told us about. And, you know, in every iteration, when we asked school committee and administration where their next cut would be, that's where they brought it. So with the application of that half a million dollars in increased estimates for revenue growth, and with the elimination of that $550,000 for the Second Grade Para-Professional Enhancement Program, that reduced my proposal by about another million dollars in the override, and brought me within $50,000 of the Group Two proposal from the override study committee. That's my methodology. That's how I think about this. And, but I, you know, Selectman Washinsky's proposal is... I'll let him speak to his proposal.
So I'm going to be moving an override of $7.665 million. And my methodology is working off of the scenario produced by the school administration, which is their proposal to the school committee, on how they would allocate what's in effect the Group Two proposal. Since that time, and so this is what was referred to as Plan Two, and since that time, as Selectman Goldstein mentioned, we've reexamined the revenue that we could recognize, the normal revenue growth, plus the non-tax revenue and efficiencies that we could also recognize in an attempt to bring the override amount down to a lower number. So the lower number that it comes to is 7,665, which is a bit lower than the Group Two recommendation, but yields the same level of resources as what was originally Plan Two. In my thinking about this, I was trying to find the balance between trying to satisfy as much of the school need as we could, while taking into account that we are asking the taxpayers for raising their taxes. So I think we need to be as respectful as we can to the taxpayers. And this yields a 4.2% tax increase. But let me go to the next page, which is going to... Which shows you how we intend to phase it in. So in fiscal '16, we wouldn't be taking advantage of the full levy limit. So when we vote to raise taxes, we're voting to raise the amount of taxes, the levy, that the town can collect. But we're not going to take advantage of that. We're going to phase it in as the schools and the town need the money. So the first year, if the seven point... If we vote the 7.6 proposal and the town accepts it, there would be a 3.4% tax increase. And then the second year, it would go up 0.8%, yielding the 4.2. Part of this, too, is a package of non-tax revenue, such as the increase in the meter fees, and that, too, would be phased in over three years. I think, you know, in thinking about the public hearing, and some of the things people said to us, the thing that hit me the most, made the biggest impact on me, was some parents who had kids who were in front of what I'm going to call the bubble, the larger class sizes, and then who had kids kind of in the middle of the bubble. And what we heard was the experience of the older kid versus the younger child was very different. And that kind of drove home to me the fact that we're dealing with a fundamental change in our school system. We're experiencing in our elementary grades 38% enrollment growth, which is a really striking figure, which is cycling up through the system. So we really need to be thinking about resizing the system, and this operating override is part of that. And then we'll be talking about in a minute, the debt exclusion override for the DuOchsian School. But then there are going to be some future overrides for some additional school projects. And I think we need to be also respectful that we're going to be coming back in future years for some additional overrides. So my approach is to try and keep this to the minimum necessary to provide reasonable programs and try to maintain the excellence of our schools in this trying period of extreme enrollment growth.
Thanks. Other members of the board care to be heard on this? I hope so.
I'll speak to it.
Selectman Franco?
I agree with much of what has been said, so let me do my best to amplify some points and perhaps add something to the conversation. Let me first say, I think it's important that we take a step back and explain to people who may just be tuning in what we're up to and why we're sitting here having this conversation. Perhaps, you know, the school parent who was clued in to this conversation tonight by a member of the school community, or perhaps a senior citizen who was told at the senior center that we were talking about increasing the revenue that we collect. Regardless, I think we need to clue them in to where we are and why we're here. Essentially, there's been a huge demand in the demand for educational services and school enrollment, and that enrollment has increased at a faster rate than the school's existing revenue sources. And in order to address that shortfall, that shortfall between the cost to providing education and the money that the schools currently receive, we're preparing to put a measure on the May ballot that would ask Brookline voters to increase the amount of property tax we receive, in addition to a package that would also increase the user fees, essentially, that the town receives. So that's what this entire conversation is about. Let me speak to the two proposals on the table before the board right now. I believe that Selectman Washinsky's proposal, the $7.6 million override, is the right approach. And I favor that proposal for two reasons. One, that proposal is based on the methodology that the O S... Override Study Committee, the OSC, used, and the inputs that it used into that methodology. And I think that that committee spent many months taking a look at this question, deciding whether an override was justified or not, and what expenses were appropriate, what requests from the schools were appropriate. And the framework that the Override Study Committee used has been out there for several months, and it's withstood close scrutiny and vigorous evaluation. And I think, in my opinion, it's withstood those questions. And as to the inputs into the methodology question, again, the Override Study Committee spent months looking at the school's request and evaluating it, as did this board, since we received the Override Study Committee's two recommendations back in September, I believe. And I am confident that the $7.6 million figure strikes an appropriate balance between what the schools have identified as a need and what is appropriate to give them. I hasten to add that this board did adjust some of the assumptions, excuse me, that the Override Study Committee made, based on more recent information that we had and what we thought were more realistic projections about the future. I also support the Washinsky proposal, excuse me, as Selectman Washinsky said, because it allows the schools to implement the program that was detailed in Group Two of the Override Study Committee recommendation. And I think that that is the appropriate amount of funding, the appropriate program to implement going forward. And finally, believe that the proposal that Selectman Washinsky has made strikes an appropriate balance between the needs of the schools and this board's responsibility to be financial stewards of the town. And further, that Selectman Washinsky's proposal, excuse me, raises the appropriate amount of money for the schools going forward, and strikes that balance with the burden of any increased revenue requests, the citizens of the town, particularly senior citizens and the vulnerable populations that live in this community.
Thank you, Selectman Franco. Selectman Daley or Selectman DeWitt?
Selectman DeWitt can go first.
Selectman DeWitt?
Okay. Then I would certainly second the comments of Selectman Washinsky and Selectman Franco. And I would go further and say that I believe that Selectman Washinsky was thorough and rigorous, and I have great respect for the analytical effort that he put into reviewing the Override Study Committee's recommendations. And also observed that the proposal Selectman Washinsky has put forward, in fact, agrees with the staffing levels that were included in the larger recommendation, the higher-level recommendation of the Override Study Committee, which, in my mind, says it conforms to the review of the Override Study Committee and subsequent reviews. Most of the other changes had to do with other aspects of the financial, I guess, the other details having to do with revenues and collective bargaining. But having said all of that, the important thing in my mind, and I believe Selectman Franco said this, is that it strikes a reasonable balance in providing for the 35% to 38% additional students that we have in our schools. We are currently in the process of creating an elementary school, a devotion school, that will have five sections in every grade level, which is going to be, I think, a wonderful new school, but it will certainly be much larger than a typical elementary school. And in order to respond to the enrollment pressures, I think it's very important that we provide good operating... we provide good operating support for the school department, as well as funding the debt exclusion at a level that will make sure that all the classrooms that are needed will be able to be provided, at least in the short term.
Thank you, Selectman DeWitt. Selectman Daley?
Yeah. Well, this has been a-- I want to say, it's been a long process. The citizens and our former Selectman, Banka, and Chairman of the School Committee, Susan Wolf-Ditkoff, who chaired the Overright Study Committee, and every member of that committee put in a huge effort, I think, to do their work. We heard from-- at public hearings, from many, many people, and I think, and I know that I heard from some members of the Overright Study Committee that they still had questions, they felt the schools hadn't answered. I think in the time period from when we got the report from them until now, we've had a chance to go through that and answer many of those questions to our satisfaction. And so, I appreciate both of the proposals here. I'm leaning toward Selectman Waschinsky's because I have-- I do spend a lot of time over at the Senior Center and so forth, and I hear a lot of concern from senior citizens about the size of the override. It is going to be considerable. And we did hear from many people who were concerned about, as you mentioned, future debt exclusion overrides after devotion school. But talking about future debt exclusion overrides when you have not provided the funding for the teachers who-- I mean, building extra classrooms and you can't pay for teachers to go in them is kind of putting the cart before the horse, to put it politely. So, you know, I think the critical factor is teachers in the classrooms and the operating override. I do want to throw back to you, Selectman Waschinsky, and ask for your response, because I did have a conversation earlier with the Chairman of the School Committee, and she was-- and one of my concerns has been, and one of the reasons I did not like the lower override Study Committee number, and we should say that that group was split pretty evenly. There was one additional vote in favor of the lower number. And as I said, many, several of the members of that committee said to me, "Well, I just didn't feel all the questions were answered." And other members, I think, of that committee are committed to that lower number, even if all the questions are answered, but I think, you know, there was some differences there. But one of my problems with the lower number was, first of all, it was based on an assumption of 630 new kindergarteners per year. I think we're using in our assumption 650. In fact, this year, it was 695. And the-- I think when you read through the override study report, it's quite clear, and even, you know, the Overright Study Committee was even pretty upfront about this. If we went with the lower number, we would be needing to do this all again fairly quickly. And I know there are some towns that do do overrides routinely, like every other year or something like that. That hasn't been our practice. Frankly, I think the amount of staff time, both on our town side and on the school side, the amount of citizen time, the Overright Study Committee members, the amount of time of this board, to get to this point is way too high to do this every couple of years. And so, I want this to last for a little while, as has been our custom, to say, "Okay, do, you know, vote for this, and we will try not to come back to the well for a while." So, the lower number was a non-starter for me because of, I thought, the-- using the erroneous assumptions on numbers of kindergarteners, and also just that, you know, the cycle would need to be repeated too quickly. But the question for you, Selectman Waschinsky, was Ms. Ditkoff expressed some concern that your number perhaps did not-- they have several big factors that they deal with via contingency, a contingency line, enrollment, special education, and collective bargaining. And the question was, why do you feel your number would provide sufficient to, you know, contingency money for those factors? I know there's some concern on the part of the school committee that it might not be.
Right. And I recognize that, and, you know, the contingency numbers we're using are those suggested, you know, by the school administration. You know, the budget has all kinds of assumptions in it. Some may break in our favor, some will break against us. Is the 692 an outlier? I don't know. I wouldn't call the 620 that the Overright Study Committee was using as erroneous. I think they were using the best information at that time.
Oh, I thought they were using 630, were they using?
630, 620, 630. You know, that was the best information at that time. With the large incoming kindergarten class this year, you know, we bumped it up to 650, and that was in response to that very issue. Should we have bumped it up more? You know, we can argue one way or the other. You know, it's hard to predict the future. You know, I guess at some point, you just have to, you know, make your assumptions and go with it. You know, will the assumptions turn out to be wrong? In three years, we'll find out. But I think, you know, what we have here is kind of-- it's a balance, and it's not a perfect number, but I think it's a number that I think the town will accept. And it's going to be a challenge, and it's going to be a challenge we're going to have to meet.
Okay. Well, I guess the-- I don't feel like it's--
I have one thing to Selectman Waschinsky's comment. There's $675,000 worth of contingency built into each annual budget, plus the one-time million dollars that the school department received in fiscal fifteen is built into the base. This is doing quite a lot to move the school budget into a good position with regard to its enrollment going forward into the future.
Okay.
Okay.
I will just add that I don't think it's-- it's certainly not our business to-- it is the purview under state law of the school committee to do its collective bargaining with its own unions, and-- but we have lowered the assumptions from where they think they were going to end up, so-- or where they suspected they were going to end up. So, I think that's probably the factor. And so, the question is, you know, is there enough there, if we're wrong on one of these factors, to still handle things? I guess that's the question.
Well, there is a certain amount of contingency in the budget, and, you know, we're just going to have to meet the challenge.
There's certain unknowns that we all live with. I think that's one of them.
Well, I will say, one of the factors that has concerned me is, as I say, I have been hearing from seniors and people who don't have kids in the schools, and which is, I think we tend to think of Brookline as a very school-oriented community, but surprisingly, only 18 percent of the people have kids in the schools. I believe that's the figure, somewhere around there. So, in other words, a lot of people have to vote for this override who don't have kids in the schools, and we have to convince them that it's a reasonable amount. And frankly, what has worried me is that the-- I think that, as I said, it's been a couple of years coming to this point. Meanwhile, they've been trying to deal with the crisis situation of all these extra kids without extra funding. And so, I have been very worried about the effects if we put a number on there that doesn't pass. And I think it-- I think we have to weigh that against the other factors. To put a number on-- because all of us on this board are in touch with a lot of-- I certainly know, I hear from my neighbors in the alley where I park my car, and I hear from the senior citizens over at the Senior Center, and, you know, there is concern about how high it's going to be. So, I think we have to factor that into.
Right. And I-- and that was my thinking in trying to whittle the number down, the override number down, as much as we could while providing what I consider a reasonable level of resources. And that's why, when we found new revenue that we could apply to the formula that I suggest that we, dollar for dollar, with that new revenue, reduce the override rather than increasing the spend plan. And that was my attempt to deal with that very question.
Seeing strong support for Selectman Waschinsky's plan, I will withdraw my plan, and we can vote that one. I would like to make a couple concluding remarks. First, I think that it's important that we underscore that while we're talking about future, that the possibility of future overrides, it's my sincere hope and expectation that we're talking about future debt exclusions, not future operating overrides. My expectation is that this money should be sufficient to keep our schools operating and improving, in fact, for the foreseeable future, five or more years anyway, before we hear anything more about the need for more operating expense. I want to address the pyramid concept briefly, and-- because I know we've all heard from some of our community leaders in particular, who think that we should be offering the vote as two different choices. And I've heard it even suggested somehow it's undemocratic not to offer choices. First off, I want to disagree with that concept. I don't think there's anything about in the Constitution or in the democratic principles or the Federalist Papers that suggests that a pyramid override should be proposed. I think we're elected leaders, and we're elected to make these fiscal decisions and to propose them to the voters in this case, and I don't find it undemocratic at all that we don't offer that choice. But on top of that, as you can see, the difference between the Goldstein plan and the Waschinsky plan is actually quite small compared to the total, and for that reason, I'd say that I would be uncomfortable with any pyramid that wasn't, you know, what both of-- and what the five of us unanimously agree on is the right ballpark where this override should be. Finally, I think what we've seen here is just what I've heard from on pyramids is that there's a tendency to choose the lesser of the numbers. Well, the five of us have just done that. We've looked at 7.953 and 7.665, and for, you know, we all have-- we have our rationales and our justifications for that choice, but the truth is, we went for the lower of the two numbers, and I fear that that's what the voters would do as well. So, I don't have any problem with not going forward with a pyramid-- pyramid, I don't want to call it pyramid scheme, because that sounds a little nefarious there. The last thing I want to say is, I heard from one leader in our community, a town meeting member, and somebody who I agree with on a great many issues, and-- but I don't agree with on this one. And it was the opinion of this town meeting member that, you know, our school system has, over the years, over the most recent years, dropped in its stature, and where we don't have a top-ten school system anymore, maybe we're someplace in the teens and twenties now. And it was the suggestion of the town meeting member that we should probably throw in the towel at this point, that we're thrown-- we're faced with a problem perhaps too great to solve with dollars. And I want to say, I just strongly disagree with that. I understand that we have 17 or 18 percent of our households have kids in the school system, but I don't think that takes into account how many people had kids in the school system and are here, even if they've never had school-- kids in the school system, agree with the basic value that I think we all hold close to our hearts, that Brookline is about education and not just satisfactory education, but the best sort of education that we can afford to bring to our students. And I think we can afford to do more. I think the numbers there speak for themselves. I think the number that we've been hearing that in 10 years, this will result in a one-third increase in taxes, well, I'm sorry, even without an override, just the way interest works is, if there's a two-and-a-half percent increase every year, as there is, you'd be nearly a third just by that alone. So, I don't have a problem with this on that basis, and I think it's time for a vote.
Can I just respond to that a little bit? We've got some interesting data about the towns we, like, frequently compare ourselves with. We actually have been pretty sparing in our use of overrides compared to some of these other towns. And that certainly was a factor in my decision-making. You know, the-- in no year can I remember when our costs were actually only two-and-a-half percent higher than the year before. So, we have a squeeze going on every year to try to fit more with less, and, you know, periodically, we have to address that. And I would also say, as to the pyramid idea, if we had had, I think I said this earlier at one of the public meetings, that if I saw a clear and obvious, like, well, here's a program that maybe we could live without, and you could pyramid it that way, but just putting a lower number on there that I don't think any of us on this board think is justified, that this-- given the actual numbers of kids coming into the schools and what the schools have to deal with, I don't see putting a lower number on there that none of us think is the right number.
Right.
And as I said, I was also very concerned about the lower number, in that I think it would result in us being back here, having the same discussion again at great length in the near future, and I would rather not be in that position.
Let me add to that.
May I just make one brief comment?
Yes, go ahead, Selectman DeWitt.
The Overright Study Committee, actually, one of the things on which I believe there is 100 percent unanimous agreement was that both the municipal and school departments were being operated in a fiscally prudent manner, and they did not make many recommendations or any that I recall where they said, "You need to be doing things very differently." What they did find is that the town is fiscally prudent, that it is run very efficiently, and, as Selectman Daley just said, periodically, the limitation of Proposition Two and a Half means that you have to do something in order to make up a gap that has occurred, in this case, through the excellence of our schools, which has attracted many young families. Anecdotally, I've just been at a conference where there were a lot of academics, and a couple of them were from the Boston area, and they all looked at me and said, "Boy, you guys are so lucky to have such wonderful public schools. I wish I lived in Brookline." And I think that's part of what we're talking about here. We have great schools, and we want them to stay that way. We also want to be able to plow our sidewalks and keep our huge amounts of snow under control. But it seems to me this is a prudent proposal, and I hope the voters will agree with the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Selectman Franco. Thank you, Selectman Franco.
Let me-
Let you have the last word.
I'm honored. Let me, let me pile on a little bit, and echo the comments of both Selectman Daley and Selectman DeWitt. I think Selectman DeWitt is absolutely right, that it's important to note that the override study committee came to the conclusion that the schools in the town are operated extremely efficiently, and that there's no reform out there that could avert the need for, for an override in this case. You know, I challenge anybody, regardless of what business you're in, to continue to provide a quality service when you've got 35%, 38% more customers in the same budget. It just doesn't, it's not possible, in my opinion. And on the issue of sort of reforms, I've heard a lot of people say, "Well, the schools just need to sort of change the way they do things," that there's money floating out there. And that's not a comment about potential policy changes and not endorsing any of those necessarily. What I'm talking about is a sort of a separate issue. I think the schools have made reforms over the past couple of years, and this board knows them well. Things like the team facilitator model across the district. There's been consolidation of positions. There's been, you know, a distinct move to develop in-district special education programs to avert the need to utilize expensive added district placements. And we're, we're at a point where there's a, there's a need to raise new revenue, net new revenue. And there's a distinct difference between the lure and optics of reform and, and the amount of money that we can generate from them. And we're at a point now where we need net new revenue, and it needs to come from a sustainable and reliable source. And that's either taxes or user fees. And both those things are part of the package that this board is discussing right now. And I don't see a way to avoid it. And I'm comfortable, again, with, with the proposal that is before this board. And I think it's responsible and the right thing to do.
Very good. Okay.
I would just like to make my motion about DPW equipment, which we can dispose of quickly, I imagine, since I feel myself alone on this issue. So, I will, I will stick with the $65,000 number I said before, even though I, our latest estimate of some of the snow removal equipment was higher. But I think since we're, we're cutting the schools down a little bit, I'm going to cut DPW down a little bit. But, so I'm going to, I'm going to move that we add $65,000 a year annually to the total that Neil has come up with. So, that makes it $7,731,000. The additional to be used for DPW snow removal and other equipment as necessary.
Okay. I feel like we've discussed it enough, but does anybody else want to, want to be heard on this one? Okay. All in favor of Selectman Daley's motion, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
No.
Selectman Woszinski?
No.
Selectman Franco?
No.
Chair votes no. But we thank you for looking out for the interests of the sidewalk abuses and the, and the seniors in particular. I'm going to move that we place the following override question on the ballot for the May 2015 town election. And the override question would be, shall the town of Brookline be allowed to assess a total of $7,665,000 in additional real estate and personal property taxes, for the purpose of funding costs of additional enrollment at Brookline Public Schools, $6,983,000, and to fund the cost of expenditures in municipal departments, $682,000 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015? I hope I got my math correct. Checking right now. Yes. Good. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. I also move that we include on the, as a override question on the ballot for the May 2015 town election, the following debt exclusion question. Shall the town of Brookline be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2.5, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued to replace and expand the devotion school? All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I'm just, I just have a question about the proposed vote. We're not excluding the entire amount, are we? We're, we've talked about-
This is the required language.
I see.
This is just the way it works.
Right. But it's our intent. Why don't you explain, Mr. Kletner, what our intent is?
I would say it probably wasn't anticipated when this, Proposition 2.5 was created and these questions were created, that, that a committee might not support the full amount. But I think we've been clear with the Department of Revenue, and this is the question that needs to be done.
Okay.
The, let me just point out that the projected tax impact of the debt exclusion does not kick in until fiscal year '19, because, as Sean explained to me, the early parts of the, of the borrowing, the first wave of the borrowing for the front of the project is going to be out of normal CIP funds. And then it'll be the later phase that'll come out of the debt exclusion funds.
Okay.
Are you concerned, Nancy, that there's not a dollar amount or something?
I just want to say publicly, even though we're, we're voting on a vote that talks about the, seems, seems to talk about the entire amount, that what our thinking has been is that we would exclude $49.876 million of the total $118 million for this project.
That's-
Those that are projected.
That's what's projected.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Do I need to make the motion again?
No.
Everybody clear? Good. All in favor of the motion. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And congratulations, Town of Brookline. You have override questions on your ballot. So, thank you, everybody.
Now, we need to move ahead and meet this challenge.
That's right. Thank you, everybody. That concludes our business for tonight, and we'll see you next week, weather permitting.